Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. And where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. We know that you are with us at all times and all places, if only we turn to you in faith. And so we turn to you now, seeking your continued blessings on those of us who have chosen public service, as well as those who are with us tonight to join us in our deliberations and decision-making. We ask that you would give all of us patience and the commitment to respect and to listen to each other. For the members of this commission, help us always to be mindful that we are public servants. Help us to hear with our hearts and to think clearly and reasonably. Help us to have the vision to look at the issues before us with wisdom and the determination to do what is best, even if it's not easy. Guide us in all we do to work for the common good. Tonight, we also ask your blessings on our courageous first responders, as well as on those who seek their help. We ask your blessings on all of those who support and contribute to the work of this commission, knowing that without their diligent efforts, our work here would not be possible. Loving Creator, we pray all these things in the name of Jesus and all that is holy. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Mike Buck.
Here.
Danny Wilcox. Roger Burton. John Surbeck. Dwayne Owens. Van Sands. Peter Hugendike.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Now if we can all turn off our phones. We have a staff report on the Board of County Commissioners' actions?
Yes, no cases have been heard since the last meeting. We'll have a couple of other items to discuss later in the work session. But yeah, no cases have been heard since your last meeting.
Okay, and we don't have any consent items on the agenda? At this point in time, if there's any citizen comments on anything that do not apply to anything that we're hearing tonight, on something else that you'd like to mention or talk about, this would be the time to do it. Okay, the work session, I think what I would like to do, I'd like to move the work session to the end after the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion to permanently move the work session to after the public hearing process in our agenda.
I'll move that we amend the agenda to place the work session after the application.
All in favor?
Could we go back and do number nine, the meeting minutes?
Now, the meeting minutes, did everybody have a chance to look at those? The only people allowed to vote on are the people who were actually at that meeting, according to our bylaws. So I'm, I would entertain a motion to approve the March 15 PC meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move the-
Any comments?
I move the approval of the minutes of the March 15 meeting as presented in the draft.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now we can move to the public hearing process. This matter requires this body to conduct a quasi judicial hearing, which means the body must first find facts and base its decision upon the application of the adopted regulation standards criteria and the competent substantial and material evidence received during this hearing. All testimony must be competent, on topic, and not repetitious. The staff presentation?
My name is Greg Thompson. I am the CDS Director for Elbert County. We have one case before you this evening. Like to enter the staff report into the record as written. The case before you this evening is the Kiowa Outdoor Adventure. This is essentially a two-part application, which is a little bit unusual. As we talk about it a little bit more here, you'll understand the what and why behind that. But this evening, you are considering the special use review for the campground portion of this particular site, because that's required to be reviewed by the planning commission. The balance of the site will be reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners as well. So to orient you to the site, this property is located immediately to the west of Kiowa. We'll get a little more detailed with some maps here in just a moment, but from a county perspective, it is just immediately west of Kiowa, up on top of the hill there on Highway 86. Process, the application was submitted in November of this last year. Hearing dates, the planning commission is hearing the special use review portion of the case this evening. The Board of County Commissioners will hear both the special use review and the EDZ portions of the site on April 27. So talked about that a little bit. The special use review portion of the application is heard by both the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners, and that's for the campground portion of the site. The EDZ portion is only the Board of County Commissioners, and that's the RV and boat storage and the private recreation facility for pool and putt-putt uses. Landowners for the site are Nikki and Deborah Ullam. The property is located southwest of State Highway 86 and County Road 134. Site size is 25 acres. The property is zoned A2, and it's located in the economic development zone. So to orient you again to the site here a little bit more, Kiowa is on the east, Highway 86 is on the north portion of the site. The area in red is the subject property. County Road 134 is both to the south and the east of the properties. It kind of wraps around the site. Zoning on the property is indicated is A2. There's some AR zoning to the south. Kiowa again is located east of the site. Generally speaking, the zoning around the property is zoned agricultural. This shows the site plan for the property. Apologize if that's a little bit difficult to see. There are three kind of main areas or main uses associated with the site. Again, to orient you, on the north is Highway 86, and on the east side of the site is 134. Three different uses. The campground that you are considering is on the kind of southern portion of the site. The RV and boat storage is on the western portion of the site. And then the rec area is kind of in the central right portion of the site. Access is coming from 134, so it's immediately on the east side of the site. All the access would come from there. There will be no direct access from Highway 86. Referrals were sent out to a variety of different agencies. Core Electric, they asked for an easement and received that from the applicant prior to this meeting. Division of Water Resources, Kiowa Conservation District has asked for mulch and seed be added to any disturbed soil areas. Elbert County Public Health has indicated an engineered septic system is needed, and perhaps one or more than one septic system might be needed for the site. Elbert County Public Works, Kiowa Fire, Town of Kiowa, the Elbert County Building Department and the Elbert County Planning have all reviewed the application as well. The planning department asked for additional trees and a lighting plan as well. So the review criteria that you are considering as part of this application is listed here for you. It's in our code, the zoning code, Article 3 E5. They basically deal with compatibility. How is this going to fit in with the surrounding area? That the use would not have a burden on available infrastructure? Would not increase traffic congestion or burden the existing road system? The use would not cause significant issues with air, odor, water, noise, or light? Sanitation requirements would be met? The use would be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened? The use will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of the county? And then supplemental standards are met as applicable? Keep in mind that as you're looking at this, really you're only reviewing the campground portion of it. If there are other site elements that you wish to comment on, that's fine, access and such, but really your portion of this relates more to the campground than the balance of the site. It's a little bit squirrely, I would agree. Staff suggests that you make the following five findings, that the proposals in conformance with the comp plan, the zoning regulations, and subdivision regulations are not applicable. It's compatible with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area, and the proposal would not result in significant impact to health, safety, and welfare of the residents and landowners in the surrounding area. And to show you the site plan and where those uses are on the property, the campground on the southern portion of the site. If I remember correctly, I don't have this number right in front of me, there are 22 RV spaces associated with the campground, and then there's five small cabins that are considered part of that campground as well. Recommendation from Community and Development Services recommends the planning commission recommend conditional approval for the special use review for the campground use. Get to those conditions here in just a moment. There are eight conditions. The sign that's on the property shall be removed within seven days of the Board of County Commissioners' decision. All fees are paid, conditions are met, and the exhibit's recorded. Recordation of that occurs within 180 days. The access permit would be updated to reflect the other proposed uses on the property. Lighting plan is provided by the applicants and complies with county rules and regulations and does not have glare off-site. An engineered septic design is provided, and additionally, that there could be consideration for additional, more than one system. Additional trees are added to the south to offer screening to that area towards residential use to the south of the site. And the county shall verify all conditions of approval that are met before operation of the site. That's staff's presentation, be happy to answer any questions you have. The applicant is here as well. I'm sure they'd like to share about their proposal and project.
Okay, if the applicant is here, would you like to do a presentation? Do you have anything to add to what they've said?
Not really. I mean, the five cabins will actually be, at this stage, they'll be what they call park model or tiny home on wheels, so they're going to be licensed.
Microphone would help a little.
So Debbie, there will be 22 camp spaces, the five cabins that we spoke of will be available for nightly rentals. They will be either tiny homes on wheels or park models through camp association. I don't necessarily have a problem with putting more trees. Greg and I have discussed, and this is kind of a field of, you know, order of face that we need for the process as things become done, right, and learning things in our system. There is no landscape plan for something like this. So you get this should vibe, and Greg and I have tried to work through it. We've tried to put trees where we felt like they would work. But obviously, at this stage of the game, you're not going to, I don't feel like to sit in those trees or probably get a little bit on plants. So we will probably get the harvest plans in the next month. The entrance is at the crust so that you can see differently, playing not to line up with the other entrance, so there's no confusion as to who's going where. The parking, there's parking at the camp sites. The camp sites, you guys have the measurements on your till that actually looks quite large. There won't be any campfires at their sites. There are two gas, we're looking at having two gas fireplaces where they could go where marshmallows and do their thing as a gathering instead of having a campfire at their site. So there's a playground area for the kids. It is, we have planned a field fence all the way around to keep the dogs and children contained so that they won't be able to use them off in other places. And they won't be able to go out with their children. So we did talk to the health department. We will definitely start with the one system. It will depend on how many bathrooms we put on-site and whether or not we do any laundry area for them to wash their laundry, as to whether or not we need that second system.
Can we get your address for the record, please?
My home address? 11195 Public Indian Circle, Colorado, Illinois.
Thank you.
I have a question. What size trees are you anticipating putting down?
We originally put in our deal that we'd use six to eight foot on earth of vines.
No, if anybody else wants to.
Greg, if you came back with specific sizes that we would like.
Okay, if they're, we can take public testimony now. Each person? Do you have another question?
Debbie, I know that this is a issue that I want to talk about. I want to know.
It'll be the 29th day, and it's not, you know, you can't go over 30 yet.
Well, actually, we should have the public comment before we have the board discussion. Right, so I'm-
You call the folks up.
Okay, there's a sign-up sheet over there.
Yeah, I signed up.
Okay, and he'll call the people off the first list that are already signed up. And on the public testimony, just remember, the only part of it that we can consider tonight is the campground. Any other parts of it, if you would like to speak to the other parts of it, you can go to the Board of County Commissioners' meeting on the 27th, you said?
Yes.
Okay, and they will be covering the rest of it. And most of, I imagine, most of the questions you might have or concerns regard the whole thing. All we're looking at it right now is the campground portion of it. That's all we can vote on, and what we do when we vote on it tonight is we'll either vote to approve, to send it to the Board of County Commissioners, or we can turn it down. But also, anything we turn down still goes to the Board of County Commissioners. But they just have our recommendation, that's all it is, is our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So what we're doing tonight is not the official approval, which the Board of County Commissioners is the only one that can do that. So if you have the first person on the list?
Philip Harris.
Three minutes to speak.
Philip Harris, and when you come up, can you please give your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Philip Harris. My address is 145 South Alton Street in Greenwood Village, Colorado. And I'm here with concerns regarding a property my father and I have recently purchased, which is just south of the Integrity Auto location, roughly 32601 North Albert Road. And especially after hearing the applicant's commentary about open issues between their group and the zoning folks, I'd request that you deny this at this time until some of these issues are worked out. As I review the plan, which I only recently was able to, I mean, I think it came in the mail a week ago or less, you know, honestly, there's quite a lot I could suggest to improve, both for your use of the property as well as for impacts on the surrounding areas. Our property will be adversely impacted by this the way it stands. So if I may, I've got a couple of pages of handouts to share with you, and if I can hand these your way, and I'll give you one. That's, so the one I kind of marked, the surveyor's high plane's notation is on behalf of the applicant, and that's the second page. The first page of this is getting out is our, kind of what we're going to be submitting for our application for commercial zoning under the EDZ.
I'm sorry, what is this drawing?
Sorry?
I didn't understand what the drawing was.
So the drawing handed you is a revision to your plan that I think will improve it for your own use as well as, I don't know if Greg needs to come?
I have one.
And then the first page, this page is what we're planning. So we're going to be submitting to the zoning folks here, to Greg and his team, plans for our property, which is essentially, as you note there, it's kind of a odd-shaped piece that's directly across the street, across 134 from the applicant's property. Our plan, as shown in the less busy of the two pages there, would be a full commercial use with up to four bed and breakfast units, 15 to 2,300 square foot home-type buildings for bed and breakfast along County Road 134. And then we have commercial, more of a kind of retail commercial down along Albert Road, which of course would not be affected. My concern, our concern, is the impacts to the bed and breakfasts that we have planned. And again, as I mentioned, we just recently purchased the property, so we're just getting our submittal to the county in place. But if you look at my markups on High Prairie surveys document, you can see I'm suggesting that by revising the layout of the camping areas, the applicant here could actually yield more campsites. I've added two, or roughly 10% more for you, while also making the little cabinet units much more desirable, as those would go in the far corner, kind of the south, what would be kind of the southwestern corner, as opposed to the southeastern corner. In the southeastern corner, those cabins and campsites, as they're currently laid out, those are going to be adversely affected by the dirt road on 134. You know, those folks are not going to-
That's three minutes.
We're all done? Oh, I should have had time to hand out things. Okay, well, I hope you'll consider these things. Thanks, Greg.
Next person up is Tanner Lent.
So my name's Tanner Lent. I live at 9652 Highway 86, Kiowa, Colorado. I have the property directly to the west. I'll focus mostly on my concerns. I know Debbie and I have had some conversations outside of this about traffic, things like that. I'll let other people bring those up. My concern is, I bought the property about five years ago, and when I bought it, I noticed that my west fence sits about 10 feet over on what used to be one property, and now has been subdivided into two. So I asked, why did that happen? Well, they told me there was two unmarked gas lines that run down the property line. Neighbors got together 30 some odd years ago and just said, hey, rather than risk hitting a gas line, let's just move the fence over. I'm like, okay. Called the utilities' location people. They said one of them could be marked. Debbie has had that one marked since. The other one, they said, traditional techniques won't work, and because of ground density, there may not be a way to locate it at all. So the previous owners before Debbie that actually did this subdivision, them and I got together and said, okay, technically speaking, I've been legally advised that I could seek adverse possession. That just seems ridiculous and like a long legal process that we don't need to get into. But what can we do to do a common sense thing? So they gave me an easement. They said, let's just leave the fence there. It's 10 feet, it's not that big of a deal, I don't think it'll matter to anyone. Okay. Tom Maroni wrote that up. He knows way more about it than I do. So he wrote it up, said we were good, had them sign it. Subdivision was filed, the sales happened. After that, I was actually grazing for that owner when they sold. Debbie contacted me, asked me to remove the livestock from the property. Said, yeah, sure. I told her about my concerns, asked if we could sit down, you know, come up with a common sense solution. Since that time, there has been no acknowledgement of the safety concerns. She's told me she does not believe she needs to abide by the easement agreement. Because of how it was written, it says when the property is removed, or excuse me, when the fence is removed, the easement is null and void, essentially. My understanding is, when we agreed to move that fence line, that fence line then becomes common property. So we both have to agree, both ownerships have to agree to remove it. I said, okay, you know, I'm not married to the fence line, I don't want to hit a gas line, and my driveway over the last 30 years has creeped about two feet over. So can we leave the fence there, change the style? Can we maybe move it back a little bit, but not over the driveway? Can we move it to the property line, and since you'll have equipment there doing dirt work anyways, you guys help me out with the driveway? Can we come up with something? I have a technical legal entitlement based on how the easement was intended. Maybe it's my fault for not showing up and trusting that it was written properly, maybe it's legal. But why do we need to go to court and spend all this time and everything?
It's three minutes.
So I have those concerns. The petitioners refuse to sit down and talk through them, so.
Sorry, the next name is, I think, Chris Cass. Can you please give your name and address for the record?
My name is Chris Cross. I live on 9747 County Road 134. And the property that they're discussing, Tanner's my neighbor, which owns that whole long rectangle, and Debbie's acquired that yellow, her 25 acres, and I have that triangle, which is the 10 acres. I bought my property six months ago, well, now seven months ago, and I was never informed about putting any kind of campground. My realtor asked me to buy that property because she wanted to- My realtor asked me to buy that property because she wanted to get away from the debt, and I told her that, you know, I just barely made my 10-acre cost of, I don't care, everybody knows, $400,000. So I bought my property, and a month later, I get a notice, well, I hear from my neighbors, I never got a notice from my address, because it was crazy. When I bought my house, it was sold at 9662 Highway 86, and that's all my paperwork is listed under. Then when I purchased the property, I came down to the county and they said, no, your real address is 9747. I'm like, okay. So now I get notice that they want to put a campground behind my property, which is basically that tree line, the red line is basically kind of a somewhat tree line. And my biggest fear is that unless they put a retaining wall, a huge retaining wall up there, that I'm going to have all these strangers coming through the barbed wire fence, coming through the chain link fence, dogs coming in my property, my dogs attacking somebody, hurting them, killing them, or whatever, and then I got to deal with all this lawsuit. I got to deal with the lighting that they're going to put up there, I got to deal with the noise, and I didn't buy this property to have be bombarded with a campground. We probably have a good seven or eight campgrounds within a 10, 15-mile radius of this whole area. Why do we need another campground is beyond me, especially on the amount of dirt that has to be moved. There can't be any hills whatsoever, because a trailer will roll down, or, you know, fall off a jack stand, kill somebody. The rain will come down, wash that area out, and me owning another property in Littleton, Colorado, I had a granite shop, is in our cul-de-sac, the fire truck came in and does a big circle, and anything in that big circle on the outside has to be vacant so the trucks could get around. So I don't understand trying to put a campground in here on 134, which is up a dirt hill, trying to get into the campground, and if there's a fire, how that truck can turn around when she's got all the storage, the campground, the campers, the tiny homes? I just don't see how a fire truck could get in there and put out a fire without having issues with that. The other part is, is coming off 86, there's no turn signal. You come over the hill, you've got to slam on your brakes for any cars or trucks. I didn't hear him say three. Okay, thank you.
Next name on the list is Todd Brown. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name's Todd Brown, 9770 County Road 134, immediately to the south. My family and I reside, we're a dual-generational family. I'll make it really quick. The requirements by the own presentation were, A, you have to weigh the harmony of the community. You just heard three residents that are immediately adjacent to this, nobody supports it. Particularly, we don't want campsite guests in our neighborhood. They're not residents, they're guests. I don't want them in my neighborhood. I would speak for several other residents that are not choosing to speak. We did the public hearing, there was not one resident on that roadway that supported the campground. So there is no harmony of the community on that roadway that supports the A section. The D section, the sight and the sound of a campsite with two trees, the petitioner even said, we're going to put up a couple trees. The petition says two or more. The only requirement that presented to you is two trees on a 25-acre parcel to keep the campsite noise from going into the neighborhood? That doesn't work. We have a dozen trees, and my kids make enough noise that Chris, who you just heard from, can hear my kids yelling and screaming. Times 25 campsites, I don't think two trees per written by the approval is going to work. The other thing is, the fencing by the petitioner, own statement today, that's to keep people from wandering into the neighborhood. That's a drastic impact. We have livestock, we have dogs, we have kids, we have neighbors that don't want people coming onto their property. Chris said he has dogs, he's worried about biting neighbors, they're guests, big concern of the community. So that ability to be able to protect our neighbors from the wandering guests is a big concern. And then third, lastly, one septic system for what we just heard of, guests can be there for 29 days. You have 29 residents now, 29 days of residents living there plus five cabins, one septic system? That's not, by what was presented, the proposal doesn't even make common sense. You have five homes that people can stay 25 days or 29 days, one septic system? That doesn't even come close. Those people aren't staying for 29 days and taking their septic somewhere else to dump. They're dumping it every day. So just those three factors, I would say, at face value, I'd not approve of this, or at least make a recommendation on the current status not to approve. Thanks.
Next person on the list is Wes Harris. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Wes Harris. I live at 4450 South Alton Street, Greenwood Village, Colorado. We recently purchased the land across the road from this particular facility, or proposed facility. We don't have an objection to the land use, but we do have an objection to the way it's laid out. First of all, the ingress and egress to the facility is on the County Road 134. It's a dirt road, it's an uphill drive. RVs, I happen to have an RV, so I don't know what they're like. Making that turn and coming in and then making the turn into the campground is going to be anything but difficult. Secondly, it's going to generate a considerable amount of adverse conditions on that road, dust, washboarding, and the like, unless that road is paved. The alternative that we suggested, that you've got a copy from the first speaker, is to have the ingress and egress right off of 86, coming down the hill before you get to the county road, which would be much easier and for the vehicles to traverse that road and then to get into it. Secondly, there's no screening on their plat. They suggested there's screening, but there isn't any. So we suggest screening along the, would be the east side and the south side. Additionally, we are suggesting you move the campgrounds around to the west. And the screening with trees that are located, there's 140 feet between each tree, that's not a screen. That's not even a woods. So those are the things that we take exception to.
That's the last person that's signed up.
The applicant, would you like to address the...
Mr. Chair, you may wish to ask the rest of the audience if there's anybody else that would like to come speak.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak that hasn't signed up?
It's concerning.
Your name and address, please.
Carolyn Courier. I'm at 9660 County Road 134. My question is about the space where they could stay for 29 days, and then do they have to leave the property? Or are they just moving over a space, so if they're in space one, they move to space two, and they're another 29 days there? How does that work?
So the state statute does not say?
Wait, just a second. Once she's done, then you'll have a chance.
That was my question. And then also, since I'm up here, I'm also opposed to this campground. We have recently moved there about three years ago. We moved from Aurora, Colorado. I feel that this is an impact to all of the neighbors in our area as far as traffic goes. And again, just having people in the neighborhood that are unfamiliar with livestock, unfamiliar with the country lifestyle, being, you know, we don't know who's living in this campground. You know, I moved out of the city to get away from that, and I don't want it in my backyard.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? That's something that they'll have a chance to comment on.
Diana Edstrom, 26060 County Road 41, Albert. I just wanted to make a comment, because I don't think a lot of people understand what the EDZ zone allows. And this property is in the EDZ. So some of the things that are allowed are a crematorium, a raceway, retail space. Right now, you already have a cement batch plant that is going to go in on 86, just a little bit to the west. Hospitals, there's all kinds of things that can go in on as the EDZ per the Albert County zoning regulations. So a campground is not allowed in the EDZ. I don't know why. But listening to the comments of the residents that live there, it's perfectly understandable how they feel. I don't think that they recognize what is coming to this area. If you drive up and down 86, you've got signs from Trevi with commercial real estate, and there's a lot of changes going on in the county, which I know a lot of people know about. Some are happy, some aren't. But again, all of that property is zoned for economic development, commercial, and I don't think people understand that, and I just wanted to point it out. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
My name is Megan Courier. I live on 9660 County Road 134. I guess I don't really have any questions or anything to say, but I have more of an issue with, I grew up in Aurora, I know what kind of campgrounds, parks, what it all brings. Brings drugs, everything like that. I waited to move out here to get away from all of that. So you're going to put a campground out here to bring all that stuff in? All these kids don't know how to handle livestock, how to handle property. So what are they going to do? Go cow tipping, because that's fun? Or put bonfires? Where are they going to put bonfires? They're not going to want to do it out at the campground where their parents are watching. You know? That's all I got to say about that. And then, besides all that, what is this actually bringing besides making your guys' pockets deeper?
You have to just...
Sorry, but that's how I feel about it. Because it's, besides benefiting this community, why are people coming here to move out here, to live out in the rural area, to get away from all that stuff? Besides helping them make their pockets a little deeper, I don't see a benefit of it. And they brought up a fact of the fair, and how the younger kids wanted to all stay there, but there wasn't enough space. Well, they're still like a mile away from the campground, so they're still getting, they're not a part of the fair still. That's all I got to say about that.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
My name is Danielle Olem. I live at 29875 County Road 93, Ramah, Colorado, 80832. For the people who just moved here, I just want to say, did you think that you closed the fence behind you? Because before you moved here, we all felt that Aurora, Colorado was just fine. So we're still making developments, and life goes on. We did not come here tonight to discuss fence lines, or have you decide on what is an agreeable fence line or what is not. We came to talk about a campground that we, that the Olem's would like to put in, and it would be a much-needed thing for our community. I also serve on the Kiowa School Board. We are trying to save our mascot, and we are having the Oklahoma Tribe come out. One of the things that is a huge issue is, they would like to be able to stay, we would like to put them in a hotel. We don't have anything like that. The fairgrounds is very hard to book, and it would be a much-needed thing in our community. As far as inhibiting a bed and breakfast, I don't understand how anyone can propose changes to someone's plan unless they're going to fund it out of their own pocketbook. And I'm sorry that we are putting in, they're putting in their special use before you are. That's it.
Okay, if there's nobody else at this point, we're going to close the public comment, and the applicant, if you have comments to make about what everybody else has said.
So Debbie Olem, again, I just wanted to say that the layout we chose was to leave the least amount of disruption to the terrain, and that is why we chose the layout we did, and to keep the campers away from the highway. So as for the fire department not being able to turn around, the fire department, as you saw, they were a referral packet. They do have, we have a complete loop. It's a 60-foot-wide entrance. It is plenty wide enough. It is wider than the streets of Shasta Court over here in Kiowa. It's plenty wide. I want to make clear that when we decided to do the field fence around the perimeter, it was in hopes of trying to help address keeping the kids and any of their pets contained in the campground. I recognize that I don't, I wouldn't want kids running into my yard either, I get it. So that was something that we chose to do. As for the septic, that is between, that is not even for us to determine. That is for the Colorado Department of Health and Environment. That is not for anyone here to determine. And they will make that determination. We've met with them several times. They will determine if it is one or two systems based on the number of toilets. They have a whole arithmetic formula for it. There won't need to be a retaining wall. If, in fact, there was enough dirt removal, there would be, but there won't be because, and that is where the field fence will go between us and them. I do recognize that Mr. Cross did not get his documents. I specifically saw that his name was not on the radius list. I reached out to Susan Murphy in the assessor's office, because that property to this date is still listed as Wildman's property. I specifically called Wildman's and said, what's the scoop? This is still in your name. You guys can reach out to Ashley if somebody has a problem with that and find out. I called back to the county, I talked to them to confirm. I am obligated to send it to the owner of public record. That is why Mr. Cross did not get his letter. So there's nothing I can do about that. As for the fence, it doesn't belong here. We'll deal with that outside of here.
There was some comments about the trees. Do you want to...
The trees are on there, there's not just two, that was, his recommendation was to add two more, not that there would just be two. So the trees are on there, there's several of them on there, they're noted on the diagram. So he would like two more on the southwest side.
The comment that was made about access from 134 being a dirt road versus Highway 86?
The state preference was for it to be off of 134. The traffic study that was done by Kim Lee Horn showed it coming off of 134 also. So that is...
The width of your entrance?
60 foot. 60 foot.
If I might chime in on the access question off Highway 86, I would not expect that the state would allow access to this individual site when there's a county road that could provide access to that.
Think about the easement issue?
Uh, the easement was created during the time that Jubilee was being split. As he said, it was written by Tom Maroney. It was signed. It specifically states that the easement expires upon the fence replacement. Okay, removal. Excuse me, choice of words. And, um, I, that's not for me to decide. That is, um, that will be somewhere down the road whether, I, I own the land. He may have an easement to cross right there, but that doesn't belong here in the planning commission hearing, quite frankly.
It's really, yeah, it's not really part of what we're addressing.
No. And it was part of the title policy. It was a recorded document. No, it would be along that west... Right. Yeah.
Gas line's not the issue, easement is.
Either way, easements aren't dealt with in this hearing.
Okay. So, now, we're going to close the applicant rebuttal at this point.
I have another question, Van. I'm sorry, I thought you had a question.
Okay. Comments that I do, can you, you purchased the property partly because it was in the EDZ, correct?
That is the biggest reason I, and for the proximity to the town of Kiowa.
Okay. Why did you, you wanted it close to the county, town of Kiowa? Why?
Um, because, so, I like the idea of this property because I had hoped that we would be able to work with, um, unbridled and the county, and because I do a lot in the town of Kiowa, and I wanted, uh, we are working on doing bike paths or a bike trail, walking trail, something. And we, it was a close proximity to be able to tie in a walking trail.
Was there any other reasons?
No. It was available and it was EDZ.
And the EDZ is?
An EDZ is completely the economic development zone, and to be honest with you, I could put about anything there, but he's, we've, he's always thought he wanted to do a campground, so it's what we did.
Regarding the, uh, planning commission, the public hearing has been closed.
You closed it. So, aligned with the rules, you closed public hearing. Sorry, sir. He also didn't ask to speak.
So, now, we're going to move to a board-only discussion on this. So, comments?
We don't have any place where people can stay on a long-term basis. And that's been a problem, and I think I'm also on the economic development group. Without hotels, rest, places to stay, you run into a real problem trying to attract businesses. So, this type of thing is, is good. The other thing is, I was in the, the lodging business for a few years. The one thing I found was that people that stay in trailer, trailers usually don't stay in camp and, in, in other types of facilities. So, I understand that, that you may feel that there's a conflict, okay? But, okay, you're looking at two different groups of people. And besides that, competition is competition. If you don't want to compete, then maybe you're getting in the wrong business. That's my comment on it.
Just a quick comment. I have a bunch of questions regarding access, safety, traffic, but they probably pertain to the next, uh, time we hear it on the rest of the property, like the campground part. I don't have a, um, any problems that are legal or, you know, that I can address as a, a good mission.
Yeah, I, I have some questions. What is a field fence? What kind of fence is that?
So, typically, the small squares at the bottom, and then they get bigger as it goes up. So, that you can make, it's, if I'll call it a little field fence.
And how, how tall would that be?
It's, it's, average is four and a half feet tall.
Okay. And then I had some other questions. Employees, is there going to be an employee that's going to monitor the?
There would be a camp host. That will monitor the comings and goings of a camp.
That's a full-time employee? Are they have certain hours? Or do they have, you know, eight to five hours? Are they there 24 hours? How does that work?
They will stay on the camp.
Okay. And then signage? I noticed you had the one sign in the diagram off of 134. And then, was there going to be any additional signage along 86 or?
Uh, not at this time. I mean, we, I think they'll be able to figure out what it is. If you drive by, yeah.
For sure. The other question I had was, did you do any event traffic study, um, estimations? I know you want to take advantage of the events for, to drive in business like the county fair, the rodeos and that type of thing, but the traffic study was done on a Thursday morning when it's very light, you know, medium, average traffic. So, what about during an event traffic? Did you do any projections or any?
Debbie, could you come to the mic, please? Thank you.
I don't believe Kim Lee Horn did. They did, um, they also were the ones that were in charge of Messer Arena's, um, traffic study, and so they did pull some other added information from that one too, when I talked to him. And I, to be honest with you, I can't answer a lot of questions about the traffic study. It's out of my...
I like the project, to be honest with you, but I do have that concern would be the traffic, especially during an event.
Well, they only count the one, they presume to count how many you would have turning, and, um, I, my understanding, and I could be wrong, is that if, they're considering six at this point, um, per hour, and if, and it doesn't go until, it goes up until it reaches 10.
I saw that. And then, but if it's an RV, it counts as two, which would make it well.
And they are, and, and they already counted by doing us at six.
That was already, it was only three?
Yeah.
And then they already doubled it to six? Okay, I didn't, I misunderstood that.
Yep, so he's already doubled his number based on the fact that it was an RV.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering where you got that math.
Yeah.
I was like, how did they get that? Okay. Okay, that's good. What about the growth levels that were projected? I thought those growth projections were low for the community. I think you guys will be busy. I think there'll be more growth in the community. There's going to be new subdivisions. There's going to be a lot of growth. There'd be a lot increase in traffic, but they only projected a 0.9% growth, annual growth.
Are you in reference to Kim Lee Horn's growth projection? Yeah, I honestly don't know.
I didn't think that was accurate.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know where they pulled their numbers from.
Parking for day passes. Once you, if you put a pool in there, I think you guys are going to be really busy. Do you think you have enough parking and enough?
The goal is that the pool will be, um, so, we've explored private, public, and private-public combos. We, at this point in the game, we would go with private or private membership pool. Um, you could rent, we're looking at day passes for the pool where we could assign so many people for a camp space, so then that camp space would be out, like we couldn't rent it out because they would be, that number would be using the pool. So that our numbers, our population numbers would be able to sustain it.
That's all I have.
Just one quick add-on to what you're talking about with respects to traffic. I, I saw in the, in the report that it covered, uh, trips and volumes, but has any studies been done on the safety of that location on the hill or approximating, uh, close to the hill with respects to where the county road comes on to 86?
They did not add anything to their study. They just, when they went out, they picked an area they felt had the best visibility from both directions, and to give you time, you were far enough away from the intersection. So, yeah. Absolutely.
It, it is on a hill a little bit right there.
Yeah, so that you, and...
Visibility, I thought.
Well, and, oh, yes, as you're coming this way? Yeah, I, but when you're pulling out, but if you're sitting, I didn't know if you were in reference to coming out of the campground or coming out of 134.
No, I meant going west on, uh...
86.
86, yeah.
Right.
And turning left across traffic onto 134.
And you're accelerating on that hill as you?
Right.
That was my concern. I, to be honest with you, a deceleration lane would be great, uh, but they're not recommending that in the traffic study. And I started looking at those numbers saying, well, are they, are they doing any event traffic, uh, projections? I mean, it's great on a slow day. It's, it's not going to be a problem. It never will be, but I think you guys can generate some real traffic. And, um, with the fairs and the, some of the events that they have here, it could be a concern down the road. I think the projection, uh, growth projections are low. So, I think down the road, it could be a concern. That's all I have.
A question back to the swimming pool thing. It's, uh, it's available for use by the campers only, correct?
Correct. Are we supposed to be discussing? I don't know if I was allowed to discuss the pool because it's not part of the campground.
Is the pool, Greg, is the pool?
This whole gray area, I never...
From my standpoint, it is not because that's part of the private recreational facilities park.
The next question, somebody raised this, uh, on the 29 or 30-day limit, can they move from one space?
So, at this point, our stand has been that no, they would have to check out, I mean, on their 29th day. The state statute that I have, that I investigated and called in on doesn't really say, I mean, they don't, I guess, I don't know if nobody like thought, okay, well, they're just going to move a space over. I don't know. So, at this point, our stand has been that they would stay 29 days.
Can I ask a question? What do you think the average turnover is going to be? Do you think everybody's going to stay there for 29 days?
No.
That must have had some, some sort of planning.
Right, no. I, on average, no, but I would tell you there are a large number of them that stay...
A week, two weeks?
Yes, two weeks. And then, Casey Jones Park in Elizabeth is a fine example. I mean, there are some that stay there, have... Yeah, not, well, but they were. Yeah, yeah, so that's been fixed, but same scenario, 29 days. So, yeah.
Okay, another question on the, uh, use of the septic. I, I see on the site plan, there's a dump station.
Yes.
Is that going to be available for, to the general public to drive in and pay for a fee to dump if they're not staying on the site?
If, if our septic numbers will allow it, yes, that is our intention. Um, there are only 10 sites, um, along that one side that have full hookup, and so, based on the number, um, that you're allowed per septic system.
Okay, and, and, uh, to, back to the septic system, I see where the, what you just said, eight or 10 spaces have full hookups?
Yes.
And the cabins?
Yes.
And the cabins appear to go to a one septic station, and those eight or 10 spaces go to a different one, and then they tie into a common leach field?
No, you'll have two full, complete systems.
So, two separate?
Two leach fields, two tanks.
What are the size of the tanks?
That'll be determined by the state. We don't determine the field size or the tank size.
On the, uh, question on landscaping where, uh, planning staff has recommended additional trees, they said two. I question that be an adequate number? Have you addressed that further?
So, here's the problem with that is there is no real guidance in our regulations. So, it's, it's what, what should you do? What can you do? You come into can, would, should. I can, I don't want to, I'm not setting, I don't say I'm not setting up a park because I am, but I'm not setting up a forest or a nursery. So, I will, we are, we're willing to add some more trees and help with the screening, but we also want them to live.
I might point out to the, uh, planning commission that, um, one of your review criteria for the use by special, a special use review, number F or letter F, is the use will be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened. That's about the most direction that we have. It doesn't say how many trees, how tall, how big, but it talks about it being adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened.
Okay, mine is going to go kind of back to your trees because I think everybody else kind of hit on all the points. Good, Van had some. The trees, one, we have no landscape plan. Right?
There is a minimal plan, the, the dark area, the dark dots, if you will, on this.
As far as do we have a, do we have a written landscape plan that requirement in our codes?
The code does not, um, identify what is supposed to be within that or how that's supposed to be earmarked. The criteria I just read you is, is basically the length and breadth of that.
That's what we have. Okay, so, it really comes down to, at this point, we're requiring trees. One thing, I kind of, I have a different look at it. I don't want to see all the trees. Personally, I don't want to see the water being used to water because you put trees out in that prairie, we're going to have a tough time keeping them alive. Every time we've required trees in any other application out here, especially out 86, they're all dead.
They're dead.
And I kind of, the other thing is, to get enough water to these trees, it's going to take a lot. So, what you proposed there, I, I'm, I'm good with, and based on what we have in our code, we have no requirement. So, really, for us to tell you to do something, we're kind of overstepping our bounds to state that you need to do this and this and this. Okay, because I noticed when we, how we worded it in your application is that you're looking to the commissioners to, to affirm or state a condition, right, Greg? Isn't that what you're trying to?
There was a condition to, basically, I'm paraphrasing as I pull this up, but, um, provide two additional trees that would be a more natural look than one every 140 foot.
Okay, so I, I looked it in. All right. So, I drove around and looked at all our storage areas. All right? All right, so we've got one on thirteen and Singing Hills. Okay, we've got one over by Singing, by the, the golf course, Spring Valley. One by the golf course that borders a residential area, no trees, none. Okay, the other one on thirteen and Singing Hills borders Deer Creek Farms. I think that's the corner there. Um, I see a few trees around that. They're sporadic and they're placed, um, about every, you know, I wouldn't guess, I'd have to go walk it off. So, but what concerns me, those trees there, a lot of emmerded. So it comes back to, I, I don't think we need to be putting requirements on somebody to do trees unless we amend our code and actually include a landscaping plan in our code or requirement, or we set some kind of standard. Okay?
That is, to be honest, to be honest with you, that is where Greg and I butted heads over sizes because I put six to eight feet ponderous pines and Greg came back and says, no, it has to be six foot by the standard. Well, okay, but that isn't a standard, that isn't the standard for a special use. So I would like to see you guys at some point address some of that just to make it easier for somebody else to come through. Know what the rules are.
As a county, we need to really, if we're gonna amend our code or do something, if we're gonna start requiring landscaping, we better have some requirements to stand on. That's where I kind of sit with the landscaping requirement.
But it isn't just doing two trees, as was said earlier. It is, it does, the plan does call for trees in several locations.
Okay, so really, right now, the way we have this application set, when you read our code, what we require, really the landscaping required, requirement is at the discretion of the applicant. Really is the way it sits.
Agreed.
So with that, I don't know if we're, if we're gonna even look at a condition. And here, we were supposed to state some kind of condition. I just kind of wanted on the record that, one, I don't think we should apply a condition that, that actually puts this application in jeopardy of not being, okay, approved because of something we don't have, we don't have any codes to stand on. That's the first thing.
And I, nobody mentioned it tonight, but I did wanna make sure that you guys all understood that it was the Denver aquifer that we're going to, not. So because originally the packet came out with lower Dawson and that is not where we're going.
No, and everything in your water, there's no upper Dawson. It'll look like lower Dawson, Denver.
We have a permit for each.
Okay. Now, I wasn't too concerned about that, but I am concerned about the conservation of water. And we're sitting out there on the plains. When you drive through there, you look out there, there are no trees except what's been planted around houses. Now, your buffering, your trees aren't gonna provide the buffer. I think you guys did good with the fencing. That I think provides a good buffer. Okay, I think that's adequate. I think that, that's gonna work. I think that's gonna be your best buffer. Then the other thing is that I would like to mention, a lot of people are talking about people in campgrounds. And the type of people that you're gonna have coming to this county and being in campgrounds, I hear people talking about going into different places, you know, your kids, your dogs go running into fields. You know what? I'm retired. And I probably stayed at, there's no, I bet we have stayed at no less than, I would say a hundred and fifty campgrounds across this country, all over, coast to coast. And, you know, what I've seen is that people are generally pretty respectful. If I'm talking about people camp, and I'm, and I'm speaking, I, we've been at a lot. I've been in some places that are questionable and I've been in some places that have been, you know, really nice, what they would call a resort. But I can tell you, overall, people are pretty respectful and especially with the pets. So I wanna, these are to some of these people who have, are concerned about what's going in next to you. I think you're gonna find the people that will frequent this campground, I think are gonna be people that are, that are respectful, that are here for an event, that are coming out here maybe to enjoy the area. I think you're gonna see a different clientele of people than you expect.
Danny, can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Just a second. I spend a, a week, two weeks a year, okay, up in a very similar place, okay? And most of the people that have trailers, I never see them.
I know.
So, I mean, they're, they're out doing their thing, doing whatever, okay? They're not out. And most of them don't have animals because it's too difficult to travel with them. And if they do, they keep a pretty close eye on them.
Yeah.
There's probably gonna be a restriction that dogs have to be on leash.
Well, that's in the county anyway, I think.
They're not gonna be running around like that. And too, too many people are worried about their kids not to be watching them. So, I, you know, I think that's probably what we're gonna say.
I would say that most of the people you're gonna see are probably older, so.
Yes, yeah, like us.
Anyways.
Hi.
I have an RV too, but the thing is, when you go into a place and you park, you leave the RV and you go do your day trips. You go see what you're gonna see. You, you, maybe you're going down to the Stampede or you're doing one of the county fairs or something else like that.
They may be staying, visiting family here, that, and they just, you know, they're camping there.
I mean, the, most of the trips you're gonna see are actually with the tow vehicles going and coming and not the RVs going and coming because they're just gonna sit there.
In the last comment, everybody kind of hit on, this is in the EDZ. This EDZ was specifically designed for economic development. It was put into place by the commissioners a couple of years ago. And it was truly set to streamline a place so you could actually get economic development into this county. So that's what that EDZ was designed for. A couple of people stated that, thank you. So.
And the, the EDZ is along major corridors through the county. And eighty-six is a major corridor.
Eighty-six, thirteen, Singing Hills, part of twenty-one.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, there's a bunch of roads and it's all designed. Okay, that's it. I got one done.
I know, I just would say that one of your, look like the commissioners. The challenge for me is, uh, the challenge for me is that we have, uh, we can only deal with what we have to work with in terms of governance. We're, just make a suggestion and the commissioners have to decide what the final outcome is. So I'd encourage people to participate in all levels of the process.
Okay. Next thing is the board. You wanna do, you wanna me do?
Okay, I'll make it. I move that, yes, you are twenty-one to zero zero seven nine. I move that we approve, recommend approval.
Subject two.
With the conditions as stated.
Eight conditions?
Eight conditions. But also the questions on the conditions brought to the, to the board?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what we just did is we approved sending it to the Board of County Commissioners and with a recommendation for approval. So the Board of County Commissioners are the final in this. And I would encourage all of you that want to have an impact on it. The Board of County Commissioners are the ones that are gonna make the final decision over the entire project. And all we're looking at, and all we did, was the campground portion of it. Okay?
Just let people know, the Board of County Commissioners meeting is on the twenty-seventh. It'll be in the afternoon at one o'clock, right back in this room, if you're interested in coming to it.
The rest, the rest of the meeting we've got is a work session. We're not actually getting a dream, we're gonna want our work session.
Can we recess for a minute?
Yes, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a five-minute recess. So I, I asked him to. Van? Kevin Kirk was going to be appointed on the thirteenth to the planning commission. Well, it was an interesting one for you to sit in on the audience for the first one. Yeah, I've got, I'm delegate to three of the four on Friday and also the state. Four out of the five, but I'm a delegate for.
I'm just going to two on Friday and I'm going to the state.
Are you a delegate this time? Well, I got, I'm staying the night, Friday night, and I'm gonna go to a centennial dinner. So, um. Tom Peterson, just trying to get everybody from Albert County to the same place. I bet we have too many for a table.
I know we do. And I figured he probably would be putting them together. He probably could have too.
Yeah, we'll see what he, see what he manages to get together. I imagine I'll talk with whoever.
Good for you. I need more of us.
We moved a lot.
Yes.
My dad, my two younger brothers were Army. I decided to be served instead of serving. And you also served.
Well, I grew up in central Texas, about forty miles from Fort. Fort Hood. And so that kind of dissuaded me from, uh, Army. And then I, I went to boot camp and I was on the bus with the Marines. And knew that I knew the right choice on the Marines, took all the boots off. It was quite a difference, the scenario of showing up in the Navy.
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
Well, you have the information you're gonna present for the session?
Yeah, um, so a few things, I kind of continued a couple of them over to this. So we need to find a time, and what I'll do is maybe ask you guys some, some certain times, but the board would like to have a work session with you guys, and would like to do so in kind of a relatively informal manner. Uh, we'd like to set up a time when you guys can get together with them, with staff, and just kind of, you know, talk planning stuff, if you will. So, um, we'll be looking for a time to do that. I'll send something out tomorrow, just kind of ask, you know, you gonna take a trip for a month or so, let us know, so we can try to fit that in around that. Well, I'll check with him first then. If you guys are interested and available, the Board of County Commissioners will be recognizing the, um, the volunteers at their April thirteenth meeting, so next Wednesday at one o'clock. Um, all the volunteers that, you know, help the county, basically, are going to be, um, recognized, you know, have a little bit of, um, yeah, recognition for you guys. So you're certainly welcome to come to that if you're available and interested. Um, just other things, kind of from a, you know, just a, things that are going on in the background. Um, the comprehensive plan is probably due for an update next year. Um, I would expect that that would be a budget item, so when I say that, I don't know exactly what all that's going to mean, and we don't do budget until towards the end of summer or the end of the year here, so, um, but I would expect that there'd be at least an update to that. We did the last one in 2018. About every five years, you need to make some changes to that. Some of the assumptions that went into that were more market growth than what we have had. We've had some growth. We've had a fair amount of change, but not as much as what was expected. Yeah, so need to kind of adjust the plan to fit what has happened over the last five years, and maybe, you know, adjust some of the expectations with that as well. So that's something that will be coming down the pike. Um, other plans that are in process, uh, we have a housing needs assessment. Uh, we have an RFP that's been let for that. We've had a company respond to that. Uh, there were some interviews that were done today regarding that. Um, so that's something that the three towns have expressed some interest in as well. Um, so it's not just the county, but also the towns are, you know, looking into what, um, the county needs in terms of different housing options.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
Yeah.
Can you, can you, uh, say that again? What is, what is, is that?
Housing needs assessment. So, looking at what the community has and what the community might need in the future. From a housing standpoint.
Okay, for what purpose? Just so you know, have the information? I mean, what do you do with that information?
Well, that helps then, and what, what that would then typically come up with is a, kind of almost a housing policy document. So if you identify what the need is, then you have as maybe a, a component to the comprehensive plan, a housing, um, it's not called a housing policy, but for, you know, better or worse, housing policy that then identifies from a land use standpoint when applications come to you for subdivisions that have perhaps all the same type of housing. Well, maybe it's better to have more variety in that and look at that, particularly with some of the larger subdivisions that might be coming down the pike. That might be something that's important, to have greater variety in the housing that's offered. So, you know, police, fire, teachers, et cetera, have greater options in which to live.
And the comprehensive plan, the previous plan, there was a housing plan that accompanied that comprehensive plan. And after that, and when we did the new comprehensive one, we were gonna include that housing plan. You know, that ever got there.
I'm gonna plead ignorance. I think that I have seen that plan, and I think that was maybe two thousand nine or somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, I, I don't know exactly what has happened with that since. I think that that's gonna be certainly, as we were talking earlier with the comprehensive plan, that we've got, you know, something that, you know, that exists, you kind of go from there, but how is that being fulfilled? Are we getting a variety of different housing, or we have a fair amount of kind of similar types of housing product? So those will be things that will be kind of looked at and talked about as part of that housing needs assessment. And keep in mind too, that, you know, the, the towns are also gonna be included in that conversation, so, um, you know, how do they fit into that mix as well? Um, another item that is, um, out, uh, there's an RFP that's been let for that is the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and, um, that's something that will help guide the economic development component, obviously, of the, of the county, um, and, and give, you know, direction on what do we need more of, you know, do we have enough of this or that? We just heard a variety of folks testify that we don't have a heck of a lot of hotels in the, the county. Um, you know, is that gonna be something that's talked about? And at what point does it make sense to perhaps get that? Um, is that in the next five years or ten years, or not for twenty-five? Um, you know, those types of things, not necessarily looking at specific uses, but almost what sectors are we missing? What sectors can we take better advantage of? So that's something that would be coming down the pike as well. So really, this catch-all of meeting protocol wasn't about that so much, but more about some of the information that, um, Mr. Maholic had provided to me at the last meeting. There was a, a flow chart for the meeting, and then there was kind of a planning commission overview. Um, I dutifully marked the heck out of both these documents before running a good copy of it, and I don't have a good copy of it now, so I kind of intentionally didn't include it in your packet. Um, I, I think that these are a little bit dated, so it, it didn't make a lot of sense to kind of go in and try to wordsmith it and do this and that. Um, instead, I wanted to kind of have more of an open-ended discussion, um, about a couple of different things. Um, I, one thing I've heard about from, uh, the planning commissioners is kind of the timing of the packets. Um, that overview talked about receiving the packets within ten days before the meeting. Well, if your meeting's on a Tuesday, I started counting backwards and came upon a Saturday, and we don't work on Saturdays. Heck, we don't even work on Fridays. So then it becomes a Thursday, that'd be twelve days before. Um, I, what I want to do, I guess, is try to establish a good time period to get you the information you need, so you have ample time to review it beforehand, but also allow folks that might want to come to the meeting, or might want to provide letters, or comments, or evidence for you to consider in terms of their opinion or thoughts about a particular proposal, give them plenty of time as well to provide that to the county, so we can get that into your packet. Right now, what the code calls for is fourteen days notice prior to, for the signs, for the newspaper notice, and for, um, the letter, and that's on most applications. We might be able to find some that don't, but the majority of them are those fourteen days. So if a letter goes out on day fourteen, and you get your packet on day twelve, you'll never have the neighborhood comments in that packet. So trying to find that right balance, what, what I had suggested was seven days prior to that. Right now, the board gets it six days before their meeting, so their packet goes out on a Thursday for their, uh, Wednesday meeting. Um, I would certainly not want to do anything less than that, um, but I guess what I would propose is you do seven days, so we can collect those letters and put it in the packet if we have some of those letters, um, but also give you at least a week to review it before, um, the meeting. So that would be kind of what I would like to do. I'm more than happy to hear what you guys have to say. Um, could we change the code at some point in the future regarding that notice period? Sure, but I don't think we would necessarily do that before there's kind of more of a, a greater overhaul of the code. That's, I don't want to say that's a standard, but that's kind of a typical type of timeframe you might see in other communities in terms of that notice requirement. Um, just to address that, you'd ask, or mentioned, um, folks that get that paper packet. Um, if we get that out five o'clock on, on Tuesday, um, what I would suggest is we'd have that available for you by noon the next day. That'd give us some time in the morning to run copies and, and get a packet for you if you'd like. Um, certainly my preference is that we don't have to do that, and I certainly understand that some of you like paper. I kind of like paper myself. Um, so, you know, happy to run those for the folks that want to have, uh, paper copies of the, the packet. Um, end of last year, maybe the first part of this year, we ran into darn near a two-thousand-page packet, and that didn't seem to make as much sense to try to run, so you had two thousand pieces of paper there to look through. So I, I guess, trying to find that, that right balance with that, and happy to work with those folks that like to have the paper copies as well.
Diana Edstrom, two six zero six zero, County Road forty-one, Albert. Um, my only request as a citizen would be, is the earlier that that packet can become available, it, it, the easier it is, if there was a citizen other than myself that wanted to review it, to have the time to do that and still get comments in, because generally with the planning commission, Amanda gets it out, or I don't know if Greg's doing it now, um, Wednesday, and then you've got Thursday and Monday and Tuesday, and it just cuts it really close, especially if somebody is as detail-er, again, as I am, and really wants to look at stuff. So if there's any way to make that packet available any earlier to the citizens, that would just be my comment request. Thank you.
To the board, um, you were mentioning seven days, and your experience is, is seven days, uh, plenty of time when there's a, a couple of larger projects on that agenda? Is that, is, I mean, like Spring Valley types of things, I'm asking, is seven days plenty if you have a full agenda with some pretty large projects? I mean, I, I think it would be...
It's a little difficult when you have the big packets, to get through them. But, uh, you know, just, what do you think, Dan?
Um, sometimes on the bigger packets, you know, you end up, there's so much information. You look at the traffic studies, and when you look at all this other stuff that's associated, a lot of times, I don't pay as close to attention on the bigger packets, so it's a lot of that stuff. I just read over some of the more specific things I'm concerned with. So that's how I kind of, uh, dealt with the bigger packets. But I've, but normally, um, seven days, I can date it, I've, you know, we've been through some pretty good packets, I can get through them, not too bad.
One of the reasons that we initially went with a longer period was so that, uh, packets could be mailed out.
Well, and that was...
Instead of actually driving in, because it costs like maybe eight dollars to mail it out, but then when somebody drives in, and the mileage on it to pick it up, you're talking, uh, you know, three, four times as much.
You do, they used to deliver. There was people that actually drove their stuff. So, I mean, so that was kind of one of the reasons that, that it was extended.
Well, I was, I was here in the meeting where we actually did it, when Bob Lewis was there, and getting that, uh, that done that way was done primarily so that if you mailed it out, we'd have it seven days before. So, I mean, it's, they figured it was a lot cheaper to mail them than have people drive in and get them. At that point in time, there's like four or five people that wanted packets, and it, you know, that'll go up and down depending on who you're, who you're dealing with and who's on the, uh, planning commission, so.
One thing about the seven day thing, which is, which is kind of great, is that the closer you get to the end date, the more input you get from cities. You, you end up, because a lot of times you'll have, towards the end, you'll get a lot of citizen letters in, in the packet, and, you know, you go, you go two weeks out, and I mean, you don't get, you don't get anything, but you get that seven days, you end up getting more citizen input you get in your application.
Could, could he still send us citizen input on the, at the eleventh hour, let's say, two days before, three days before, and say, hey, if, if you could look at this, take a look at it?
Yeah, you guys talked about that. It's great.
Yeah. Because I'd like to see it, if, if there was some.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, again, it's kind of a, a balance of sorts, because I don't want to hand it to you at the meeting, here's twenty-seven pages that, you know, you haven't had the opportunity to read, um, nor do I necessarily want to send twenty-seven individual emails. Um, you know, sending it out, you know, a day or two beforehand is probably appropriate, kind of depending on scope, size, and scale, um, you know.
Right, and prior to you, we'd give emails like a day before, the day of, and, you know, it's just, as, as those things came in, they just, here, here's another citizen comment. And when they get a lot of them, the county commissioners will get them directly, and then they'll forward them on down, and then they get forwarded out to us, and, uh, it just, it, it gets... And it just, it gets kind of difficult when you have a lot of comments to try and handle them and look at them the morning of the meeting or the day before and get all that stuff.
Oh, and you might not have a chance to review them because they came in late, but that's, that's understandable because they came in late. But if he has them, he could just email them to us on the fifth day, or four days out, or five days, three days?
That's what we've been getting.
Yeah, okay.
Those emails, and sometimes it's, it's difficult to get it all together, but...
All right, here's another thing, too. These things just pop up seven days before we have a meeting. They're going through a lot of processes. You have community meeting, right? Okay, that's been at least a month before when it comes to us. So, these people aren't getting their comments into us until the day of the meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, you know, too bad. Okay, respond early.
I, I would say that...
Sorry to, you know, to be that blunt, but...
You know, we, we have to have some sort of a policy of what we're going to do.
So, it, it's, the way that our process works is the community meeting is very early in the process. That's one of the first things that happens. So, this one, I, I don't know exactly the date. I think it was in September or so when that happened. That's kind of, you know, one of the first times that people hear about this, and then they don't hear a lot until two weeks before the hearing. Sign goes up, they get a letter in the mail, and then they, you know, react to that. You know, they, we give them information about both the planning commission and the board hearing via that letter, newspaper notice, and, and sign. So, there, there is kind of a large gap.
When, when does that, what's the time period there?
The code requires it two weeks prior to.
Two weeks, so I mean, it gives you, you know, if, if somebody can't make their comments within two weeks. Well... Yes, they do. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, they do. Well, if they're not, if they're, if they're, if they have, like some of these people did, okay, oh, I live right next door, they know exactly what's going on. I, I'm sorry.
It's a work session. Thank you.
But if we're not getting the packet for, for seven days, the citizen's not going to be able to review it and still get their comment in, is what I think she's trying to say.
Well, if we get it, if we move it, we get it in seven days. Okay, once you post that on the, once you put that up on the website, it is available to everyone. I mean, it's an audience, so the citizen should have, should have access to that, to the website and go to that application as long as, you know, we stick to the seven days and, and get it uploaded seven days before.
And, and that would be, that would be our expectation, is that we would do that, you know, every, every Tuesday. I mean, if we can do that before, fine, but we want to, you know, have that, that good balance there, too.
But we were talking about whether it was seven days was long enough for us, but the citizen then has to review it within those seven days and respond with their comments within that seven days. We just have to read it. They have to re-read it and respond. So, it's a tight schedule, I think. I mean, it's doable, but it's tight.
You might have, you know, like next week, or not next week, but the next meeting on the nineteenth, you have five cases. So, one individual might be interested in this one, but they're not going to have to read all of them. So, you might have more reading than, than they might.
I was going to say one of the things to, additional information that's received. Okay, it was kind of different based on who was in CDS, what, what information you got when. What I, and this is just a kind of a question to everybody. You know, I'm not concerned about seeing every little comment from every citizen that comes in. But, and it would probably be your discretion, if there's something that come, that comes in that's pertinent to that application that deals with maybe a letter from the state or something from public health or something like that, that really, I would think that would be something we could, we should receive. And that was, I, I would go with probably your thoughts or your determination on whether to provide that for us, okay, to make that determination. So that we're not getting bombarded with everything, but we're getting, we're getting the information that, that would help us in the...
That's pertinent.
Yes.
Generally speaking, if it's about the case, I would forward that information along to you. If they've offered some salient information, they, they like it, they don't like it, they are concerned about X, Y, or Z, whatever that might be. Generally speaking, I'm going to, you know, not try to keep those things from you. I would definitely include that in the packet of information that would go forward to you guys.
Okay.
The other option there, too, is that most, most of the people that would respond would probably come to the meeting. But if somebody says they're not going to be, they're out of town and they can't come to the meeting and they have a response, that might be something you'd send to us, but all the other people that are here and can come to the meeting,
I would still tend to include that information. People have only three minutes, and they might want to include twenty-seven minutes' worth of, of information that they think is relevant to that particular case, so I, I wouldn't want to...
It goes in the packet.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to add that, yeah.
It goes in the packet, but it may not be something we see at that point. I mean, it just depends on whatever you think is pertinent.
But, but we would see it at the meeting for sure, right?
Well, what, what I'm saying is I would, my preference would be to try to include that in the packet, and then over the course of, you know, that week afterwards, I would, I would tend to gather more information and try to send out, you know, not one every twenty minutes when I might get something, but try to send, you know, after three days, here's, you know, the information I've got on that, or that type of thing where I've gathered some.
That's what your predecessors did, okay? They, I mean, three, four days before, we'd get a packet of, of comments or whatever. And that's sufficient. I mean, because basically...
The day of the meeting in the morning.
Well, that's fine. How long does it take to read a letter, okay?
It just depends on how many are coming in and whether...
Well, yeah, but how many ti- how many times have you seen more than three or four?
More than what?
Three or four. Have you seen more than three or four?
There's been a few times.
Really?
Yeah.
And you might not get to them all if they're coming in late. That's what we kind of talked about, too.
I, I would tend probably to have a, a cutoff time, and, and I haven't really thought that through. But what I wouldn't want to do is, you know, four fifty-nine, send one to you because you may not take a look at your email, and you might. So, some of you may have got the information, some maybe not, so...
You also don't want to pick and choose which, which cus- or which citizen comments are pushed, are advanced and which ones are withheld.
One of the things you could do, though, Greg, you know, is on the website, okay, wherever people are getting information, tell them, okay, that if you don't, if you have a comment, you need to get it to us by such and such a date, much like we have here where we tell them they've got three minutes. And if they don't get it into us, then, hey.
Yeah.
Then they can come to the meeting, yeah, exactly.
Okay, sounds like a week before, we'll try that for a while, and if that's not working out, I mean, we can adjust, but I, good to at least start with that. Okay.
The pipeline report, do you still have that?
Yeah, that's something we include in the board packet, the first meeting, their first meeting of the month.
That's something we've gotten in the past, too.
Yeah, I'd like to get that.
No, I thought about, I thought about that.
Yes.
Their meeting is after yours, so what I probably would end up doing is the second week, or the second meeting of the month pass out along to you after I forward it to the board.
Does everybody in the hearing have the copy of our bylaws? Do you arrange to get a copy for everybody, or do you have them?
So, as I was looking through this document, again, that overview, a lot of those things are covered in the bylaws. So, I, it felt a little redundant from what we have in the bylaws. It wasn't, so from my standpoint, I don't have any problem talking about that. You know, there wasn't anything in particular that I, I wanted to call to your attention as I went through it. If you haven't read it or haven't read it recently, it's probably not a bad thing to go through. In, in some respects, Bart Greer, the county attorney, and myself had met with Peter at the, you know, oh, in the last week or two, and we'd gone through a variety of different things. Most of them are included in the bylaws, things like, you know, conflicts of interest, you know, ex parte communication, kind of the role that you play, meaning, meeting days and times, those types of things. So, just kind of a variety of things that, again, generally speaking, are included in those bylaws. Folks who've been on the planning commission, well, do you know the last time that these were updated? I'm not entirely sure about that. Not that we necessarily need to, if they're serving their purpose.
We had a problem with the quorum is the last time. Remember, we updated it when we...
Yeah, I remember it coming out, but I can't, I don't remember exactly.
But I remember the date.
It's been, it's been two or three years?
Yes.
The quorum's five now. I didn't read it in seven.
I'm, no, quorum is four with only seven on it. And if you count how many people are here tonight, we're all here. This is really nice. I mean, every single person made it tonight. That's good.
So, the quorum right now would be four of seven. If we get somebody appointed in the near future, we have eight, then we'll be five of eight.
Already have somebody, I think.
Um, yes, coming up on the thirteenth, he's going to be appointed. But that, that is some, a number that changes based on how many people are appointed to the board. So, I keep that in mind as we, you know, go forward. There is a section of our code as well, and I didn't provide you a copy of these, but it's section, it's Article One, Section F of the zoning code. Talks about the planning commission and kind of some of your roles and responsibilities as well there. So, that might be something else that you want to look up and read when you've got a small packet or have questions about the planning commission. One other thing that I, just to make note of, we meet on the first and third Tuesdays. Right now, the meetings are set at seven P.M. I looked through the code and I looked through the bylaws, and I didn't see anything that spelled out a specific time that you have to meet. You do have a, you passed a, a, a something, basically, that, a resolution, there we go, that said that you won't have, you won't continue the meeting past eleven P.M. Potentially, if you move the meeting time a little bit earlier to six o'clock, then you potentially have more time for meeting, you add an hour potentially to the meeting. I don't know if there's any interest in moving that meeting time. If you want to just keep it at seven o'clock, that's fine. But I did want to bring it up and see if there was any appetite from the planning commission to move that up by an hour.
You would prefer six, you say?
I don't have a problem with seven. I don't, I don't...
I don't...
I've been here on a commission for over two years, and we've never hit the eleven o'clock, maybe once.
Yeah, I, I remember hitting it.
Once, yeah, but that's in, in, in two years, so, you know, that's, it's usually not a problem.
I think it would be less convenient for any citizens that wanted to attend if we moved it to six. They get off at five, they work in Denver, they're trying to get home, they want to grab, maybe change their clothes, you know, just maybe take a shower, get something to eat real quick or something. To make a seven o'clock meeting is doable, but if you're at six o'clock, they have to come, they have to get off work right on time, rush home, hope there's no traffic to get to the, straight to the meeting. I think it'd be a disservice to the citizens if we changed it. That's my opinion.
We've had people in the past that come from Simla and drove in, and when you're talking about people that are working that far away and driving in, it just doesn't, I don't think it works at six.
I like six. I'd go to bed around...
It's a, it's a, I could do, but that, that doesn't mean that going forward, people would be able to do it.
Okay. It, it's worth bringing up and talking.
I mean, me personally, it doesn't matter, but I know that it can matter to other people, especially because of the people who are working.
Sure.
And everybody is an old fogey that's retired.
Okay, well, we'll keep it at, plan to keep it at seven. Did you guys have anything else in particular that you wanted to talk to about that? Or talk about, you know, the meeting format or that type of thing? I mean, I, I would, yes, go ahead.
I have something I noticed during the meeting tonight where we limit the, and, and I know we want to get through, we have a lot of speakers that want to speak, but the three-minute is awfully short. For one gentleman, barely got his handout passed out and said a couple of words, and his three minutes was up. I would like to see it moved to four minutes, unless there was a big meeting where we had a lot of people and we felt like at that particular meeting, we needed to limit it to three minutes. But if it's a light night, like, you know, or a typical night, I'd like to give the citizen at least another minute to speak.
Well, it's, it's kind of at the discretion of the chair, isn't it?
Well, we were cutting them off hard tonight.
What's happening now is we're marrying what they were doing. I mean, and I think whatever, whatever we do, I mean, I think we stay in line with how we're... That's why I think DOCP goes three minutes.
They do.
Keep people to that. I think if that's what they're going to do, I think that's...
It's provided for, and Section Two, Part Five says the chair can grant an extension over the three minutes and never to exceed ten minutes, so the chair can do that.
Didn't we have? We have done that.
We've, we've done that when it's, when they've got good information and they're, and they're, they're being polite. If they're not being polite, three minutes is pretty hard.
And I would probably plan to still call out that three minutes. You know, I, I think that's usually something that happens at the...
We got that working now.
Yeah.
I think it would be good if you're going to, like, tonight, I thought there might be more comments you could say at the beginning, but the time will be set at three minutes, and then somehow we can figure out how to extend it either after everybody has spoken or say that we can grant a two-minute extension. I don't know how to do it, but I think it could, it should be stated at the beginning of the...
If, if we allow one person to, we have to pretty much let...
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's kind of a difficult balancing act, and... We'll just have to see, yeah, we'll have to see how it works.
Well, you, you, you definitely need to do it at the beginning because you don't want to get into it and then all of a sudden, you give some guy another four minutes or so to talk.
And then not the next guy.
And not the next person, yeah.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
That's where you run into problems.
One other thing, too, I don't think everybody has, new people, do you have a, a copy of the zoning and VOD regulations? We need to make sure that everybody that doesn't have it gets it. That was something that we've been doing in the past, so that they have those to...
Yeah, we got one to Dwayne, so we'll try to get one.
And mine, 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 mine has the comprehensive in the front of it, and then it's got the zoning and VOD. And when they get updated, we need to get the updated pages passed out so we all keep going. I've, I've used this a lot.
I use it when I'm reviewing all that beforehand. I must get it off my desk.
Yeah, I've, I've read through them a couple of times.
Because you can always have the updated version.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can provide links for that for sure. How many folks need a, a paper something or would like a paper something? Or I can give you like links to all those type of documents as well. I, I'm happy to...
I, I'm happy to get you whatever the heck you want.
We got to take the link, okay? I don't want the paper.
Okay.
Pete, Pete, does he produce, when they make changes to the zoning? Do they give a document that is just some...
We, we are in the Fourth Amendment.
Yeah.
Yep, we're going to have some code changes that'll come through in the next...
In the next week.
Yeah, the, the concept plan, concept brief thing.
That's right. We see, we see a refined copy.
Yep, and 1041 regulations as well.
We'll download, but I'd like to know on a glance what was changed.
No, we'll see that coming through. It comes, it comes through us, too.
I had a question for you. We're going to do five cases next time we need them.
We can do five cases.
That's kind of, we're, I don't think we'll get through them all.
I, I think that we can get through them.
Straightforward or the...
Um, some of them are more so than others. There's at least two or three of them that are kind of the four-lot, you know, rezoned to, you know, four-ten-lot, ten-acre lot type subdivisions.
It'd just be better if we could spread some of that out a little bit rather than... You know, we don't have a meeting for two months, and then all of a sudden, we're looking at five cases.
Three of these were ones that were continued from last month. And that's why it's, it's kind of bottled up.
But I figured...
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to accommodate those and not have others wait. And if, you know, some of them did, weren't able to get through that, then so be it. I mean, certainly, we'd try to get through all five of those and would expect to.
How much change were in those three packets that were continued?
Um, I'm going to say none. Matt's the planner that's been working on those. I don't think that there's anything that would be different, though. So if you prepared for those, kind of read through those, then you'd have a pretty good sense if you, you know, pulled it back up and took a quick glance at it. That's all I have on that, unless you guys have some more to talk about there.
Okay, then we can probably get a motion to adjourn.
No move.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
Do you remember, who was the, who was the minister that did after-meeting like us?
They can do it a lot worse.
There was on, there was a minister on the Planning Commission. And he, he made the, he made the comment, if I, if I see it...